Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, July 1st. I am Jason Peron, the Select Board Chair. Absent this evening is Vice Chairman Diane Gail, Clerk Doug Moguland, Assistant CAO Nadine Signoni. Absent this evening are CAO Nicole Parker and Secretary Lisa Anderson. And this meeting is being held in a hybrid option. We're going to start the evening with a pledge of allegiance and Chief Banish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start the meeting tonight with a moment of silence for former Accounting Office Police Sandra Robertson. Unfortunately, she passed away on June 10th of this year. We could just have a moment of silence for her. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are going to start the meeting with public comments. Is there anyone would start actually with Zoom? Is there anyone on Zoom that has a public comment regarding anything that we are not talking about on the agenda tonight? Okay, looks like no takers. All right, public comments, and we're going to leave anybody in the room that would like to make any public comments about anything that is not on the agenda for the evening. Chief, any public comments?
No.
All right. So we are going to start the meeting tonight with the interviews for the two open sergeants positions that we have here for the Police Department. Our first candidate is going to be Officer Michael Bridges. I believe Miss Bridges is on.
Evening.
How are you doing, Mike?
How are you?
How are you, sir?
Sir, how are you? Let's go.
Good evening.
Signoni.
Ready for your good morning? Let's go. Wait a minute, before number one to you.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Of course.
Thank you for stepping up for this. And why don't you tell us first, what are your career goals, including any further educational goals?
Career goals, basically just try to be wherever on that position wise, I just want to be the best that I can be. I think in doing that, I would be able to advance appropriately confidently as well. And my ultimate goal would be Chief of Police of Southway. As far as education wise, I'm actually pursuing my bachelor's degree right now. I already have my associate's degree in criminal justice. Bachelor's degree I'm pursuing, it's going to be with a specifically for public administration in the criminal justice field. And then further down the road, if I'm able to and can afford to, I'd love to try to pursue all the way to a master's. I think the higher you go up in the ranks, the more important education is.
Also. Mike, how have you prepared yourself to become a command officer?
Pretty much started right after I was cleared to be on the road by myself. I think in the earlier stages, I would just ask questions to all my supervisors as far as how they made certain decisions, why they make certain decisions. Pros and cons, trying to figure out, you know, what the best options are as far as call response. From there, I decided to take on a few extra roles within the department, not only to better myself as an officer, but to help other officers improve if I can. Throughout the last six years, I took over, I believe, six instructor roles. I became an FTO about four years ago and took part in training the new recruits, new reserve officers. And on top of that, I tried to volunteer and sacrifice as much time as I could as far as overtime opportunities, shift command opportunities, just to better my experience. I know with the little years that I have on, I would always kind of be behind the eight ball. So throughout these past six years, I was able to gain over 2,000 hours of overtime covering the road, attending to different trainings. With that, I also gained 1,500 hours of shift command experience and right around 800 hours of FTO time or field training officer time. So, and it's just taking every new opportunity that I can.
What were the other training roles, Mr. Bridges?
My training roles, so I started off as a defensive tactics instructor, which I'll circle back to after. So defensive tactics instructor, then I went to CPR and first responder instructor. Given that I'm in the MT basic, I think it kind of fit me pretty well. And then continued on to, you know, stop the bleed, which I think all of our guys are certified on. It's more of a community based, community based training class for active shooter events or mass casualty events. From there, I continued to patrol procedures instructor, TASER instructor, de-escalation, or duty to intervene instructor. And just recently, I was actually given the opportunity using my defensive tactics, training and experience. I actually just earned a lead spot at the Western Mass Police Academy as their defensive tactics instructor. And with that, we have a team of six guys to meet another Westfield officer who would lead that team and give all the new training to recruits.
Got to ask one thing. What is C4C Police Jiu-Jitsu Level One?
So C4C, it is a instructor based class for police focused jiu-jitsu training. So that is one thing that PTC, they don't really dip too much into as far as ground control, you would know.
Yep.
It's additional training that me and Officer Malone actually went to is a week long course over, I think, 45 hours. And it was all ground defense and ground control. Jiu-Jitsu based with, you know, duty belt and stuff like that. And it's a, it's technically an instructor role so that we were able to bring it back into the department. But it was a lot of training, you know, because like I said, the MPTC doesn't really dip too much into it. It's just additional training for the department.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike. Officer Bridges, describe the traits of a good leader. Which traits do you have and which do you need to work on?
How many traits? So I feel like as a leader, you need to be well balanced with multiple traits. The first one, I think is most important is you need honesty and integrity. Without that, especially as an officer, you don't have the respect, you don't have the trust of your people or the community that you serve. You also need good communication skills, not so much sharing your ideas, but I think listening is a little more important, especially in a supervisor role. Because at the end of the day, you're a team, you need to be able to listen to your members and to the members of the team so that you can move forward with sound decisions. And on top of that, too, you need humility. I think that's one of the key things that every leader would need. Because you need to be able to understand that your idea might not necessarily be the best idea. And, you know, you could always advance using others' ideas, especially depending on their strengths or their strengths and weaknesses with each officer. Now, which ones I possess? It's hard to say. I would like to think I possess communication, humility, and honest integrity. Those three things to me, I can't work on them enough. You can never be perfect at it, but you can always improve. You know, obviously with honesty and integrity, you have to be perfect, but there is always, you know, with honesty, a lot of times you need to be honest, even though it might hurt that other person. And I think that's something I always try to improve on because nobody wants to have those difficult conversations. You know, and like I said, the other two, the communication and humility, I always try to improve on. You can always improve on those. So I think those would be the traits of a good leader.
Thank you.
As a commanding officer, how would you handle a domestic incident involving another police officer?
I think the most important question that comes to mind is it depends. You can never make a decision just given any scenario because there's so many factors that play a role. You can't handle it. You can't say you would handle it as if it was every other situation because it's not. You have that whole different aspect of, they are also a law enforcement officer. There's a lot that gets involved. Now, as far as my actions and my duties, I'm going to treat it as the same. Okay, so you still find the dominant aggressor, you still separate the parties, and you still have to figure out what happened and you have to make arrestable decisions. But on top of that, there's the whole other side of things where you get post involved, you have the other officers department that you might need to notify. More than likely, you will need to notify those records when you take a shared. So as far as on the scene decisions, nothing changes. Aftermath, a lot changes.
Awesome. Yep. Signoni also.
Yep.
Mike, give an example of a significant situation when you were put in command or had to take command, and please explain what you did and why.
Okay, so last summer, I could actually, um, last summer, it was me and another reserve officer working. We actually got called for a ongoing domestic at a, I don't want to give too many details, but at a business in our town. I think being involved with the department and taking on a lot of extra calls and stuff, I actually became, I knew, or I thought I knew who we were dealing with. And because of that, prior to me and the other officer responding, because it was just two of us, I actually called in for additional resources beforehand. So we called over to Westfield, Westfield sent officers, I had the ambulance on standby because we knew, just given the history with this person, it wasn't going to be an easy call. With more officers on scene, you could always do your duties a little easier and much safer. So I think just that pre-planning coming into it helped for a very successful call. There were no injuries. We did have a use of force, but it was safe and it was effective, and there was minimal force that we had to use. I would think that for me, it was a very good learning experience and kind of a good confidence booster because, you know, you take a risk in asking for all these additional resources. You know, you always want to be more prepared, but there comes to a point where, okay, we might not need everything and everyone. But everything that happened worked out very well at the end. So I think that kind of sits with me pretty, pretty strongly.
Can I ask Apollo? Can anybody follow up with you? To say Officer Bridges made the right call or that was the right decision?
Yep. Oh, for sure. So I actually called supervisors after the fact, just to notify them, hey, this is what's going on. Especially with that too, because we did have an arrest, so we needed to call in additional guys. So I took a few seconds to call the supervisor that would have been working and then also our lieutenant, just to let him know. After a few questions, he gave me some very good constructive feedback and it was, it was a very good follow up. I think it's very important to, especially, it was good for me because the rest of that night, I knew I made a good decision and it kind of, it positively affected the rest of the shift. So it's nice.
Excellent. Thank you. Yep.
Excellent, Doug.
Mr. Morgan. I'm trying to watch you. That's all right. Officer Bridges, you're dispatched to a motor vehicle rollover and you determine that there are fatalities. Explain how you would work through the incident, what services are needed, and which notifications are necessary?
Okay, so again, it depends, you know, what are we talking as far as time of day? How many people are working? You know, because traffic concerns are always an issue. Do you mind if I ask a question? Is this fatalities known or are we just going to, after the fact that we've determined it's a fatality?
Apparently you did because you determined that there are fatalities.
Okay. All right. So after, as soon as fatality is determined, the whole scene turns into a crime scene. Not necessarily because there was a crime that occurred, but it needs to be investigated. So the first thing we would need to do is try to assign officers if available for road closures. If not, something I've done in the past actually is utilize our fire department to close the road, we have to try to keep all the evidence that we have as far as skid marks, Y marks, damage, you know, positioning of vehicles and anything like that. I would then call, obviously, administration. So my lieutenant would be the first college to advise of the situation. And then from there, we would have to make our calls to Mass State Police CPAC unit as far as, and also the Mass State Police Crash Unit, who handle all fatality calls. You know, and then after the scene, I think it should actually be an ongoing thing. Fatalities are never easy, especially with a lot of our guys, we're very connected to the community. More likely than not, we know that person or we know someone who knows that person. So I think checking in on whoever I'm working with and all the responders on scene, just to make sure they're okay mentally to stay there. I think that would be pretty much paramount. You know, you need to keep, keep a lookout on everyone's mental state during the scene. Afterwards, I know the fire department always has them, their SISAM meetings. I believe it's critical incidents stress management. And I was actually never a proponent of them. I had never handled stress and scenes well in that way. However, last year, after responding to one of our calls over on Peeding Hills, I decided to go and quite honestly, I would recommend that everyone goes to those because it's very nice just to get it off your chest so that you don't bring all the stress home. As far as after the scene, you know, the state police come in, they do their investigation. You know, you would have to notify the families that were involved as well. So that would all take place with the assistance of state police. And then you're pretty much just assisting them until the vehicles leave. Then you go do the SISAM meeting, do a debrief at the end, just us guys and us people on the shift and check in with them the next day. I would say that's about what I would do.
Thank you.
As a supervisor, you will have shifts with minimum staffing. If a major incident occurred, how would you secure the necessary personnel to cover the incident and other calls for service?
Do what you can, when you can. So using technology, it's easy. We've had code red on our phone, so I can, at any point during the call, I can request for additional officers immediately. I can make phone calls to people that are close to the area. As far as on scene, right off the bat, I would call in our mutual aid department. So we have Southfield, Granville, Westfield, Agwam. We can call any one of those departments that can come in and assist us until we have our own guys come in and then we can slowly relieve. Was there another part of that question? I'm sorry.
How would you secure the necessary personnel to cover the incident and other calls for service?
Okay, so try to keep at least one Southwick officer at every call for service that comes in afterwards. If that is not possible, I would like to try to, if Westfield is available, we would use them, Agwam. I'd probably go Westfield, Agwam, Granville, and then Southfield, depending on where the call is, what type of call it is. I think it comes down to prioritization too. Because certain calls, you can push off, you know, touch base with the calling party, let them know what's going on, and then revisit it later on in the shift, whereas other calls, you might not need to, and you need immediate response. That, those immediate response calls, those would be mutual aid towns if we didn't have the staff in.
Mike, you received citizen complaints involving officers under your command. What steps will you take to address the complaint with the complainant and the officer?
So the first thing I would do is, in that situation, although it's hard, you have to be as non-biased as possible. I know it's very easy to defend officer actions. It is not your job to defend at that time. You need to take the complaint, listen to the complainant, and submit it into our internal investigation unit, who is our lieutenant. And then also speak to the officer, try to figure out what happened, how it happened, why it happened. You know, if there was a mistake that was made, how do we train them so that mistake isn't made again? Or just figure out, you know, how did that scene escalate into a complaint? You know, it's, it happens not in this town, but it does happen quite a bit. There's a lot of other things that are involved now with the post administration too that oversees all of the police. I think that happened a few years ago, I believe, 2021. So there's a lot more paperwork involved, but it's just to keep everyone honest, you know. So that's how I would handle it.
Thank you. How do you plan to encourage and develop the officers below you?
I mean, there's many different ways. There's influencing, right? If you do your job the way that you would like to see it done, hopefully you can influence other officers. I think the, one of the most important things is you have to figure out every officer below me, who's, who has what for strengths and who has what for weaknesses. Every officer is different. You know, some might like to do crash scene investigations, some might like to do more instructing or crime scene. Try to figure out what they want to do with their career and then how do we get them there? You know, it's almost like goal setting. You know, and just from the day to day stuff, you can always help officers improve on their skills. I think debriefing is something that we don't do enough and you can never do enough of. And that's, it's important to know beforehand, you're not doing that to criticize and you're not doing it to judge. You're mostly doing it for constructive feedback and to build and improve so that as a department, we can all improve on our skills.
Thank you. I think the next question is an excellent follow on to number nine anyway, so.
What are two of the most important things that you've learned from your own patrol sergeants that you would pass on?
You can't control everything. And you need to be able to adapt. I think that was one thing that I learned from one of my sergeants. Being able to adapt to different situations is going to help everyone on the shift. Because if you are able to adapt, you can keep a calm demeanor. And then if you keep a calm demeanor, everyone else around you is calm and we can go about our business the way we need to do. Another thing I learned is, again, those hard conversations. I had a supervisor, I still have a supervisor who is very good at confronting someone with the hard conversations you need to have, if it's constructive feedback, if it's disciplined or if it's building on their weaknesses, you have to be able to communicate that well. And it's something that I would definitely need to work on. I am not good at telling people, you know, what they do wrong in a constructive way. However, with the instructor roles I have taken on, I've been able to build on that to where now, especially with the FTO process, now I feel very comfortable talking to people and telling, or talking to other officers that I've trained or other officers that I'm in command. I feel very comfortable with telling them like, hey, this is, this is what happened, this is what you did, maybe let's think something else. You know, and then the other follow up question is why? You know, if you ask them why, then you could almost have them learn what they did wrong and have them learn how to build on that, which I think would be a lot more beneficial to them instead of me telling them what to do.
That's the questions.
Anything you would like to add, Mike?
Nothing. I'd just like to take a second just to thank my family for all the support, especially through all the hours sacrificed. I really can't do it without them. And also each one of you for taking the time for the interviews. I thought the questions were phenomenal. So I just appreciated all the effort that was put into it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Sam Morgan?
Yeah, I think it'd be off the bed, all right?
I don't know either, no?
Oh, or that?
Generally speaking. So I guess if I were betting man, I'd say Parker.
All right, next to rearrange to interview Officer Garrett Parker. Ready?
No.
No? Honest, there we go. So we got a total of 10 questions, Garrett, and we are going to start with question number one with the scale.
Thank you so much for joining us. You can start with what are your career goals, including furthering your educational?
My career goals is to be a sergeant with play tonight or in the future. I have a bachelor's degree in Westfield State University in criminal justice, and I was looking at getting a master's in public administration, also at Westfield State University. I'd like to do KNI if I don't get sergeant. I have eight more years in the army and after that, I'm going to retire once I get 20, and then I would try to put in for sergeant after that if I don't get it tonight.
All right. Garrett, how have you prepared yourself to become a command officer?
I prepared myself by three things. One, doing as many hours as I can. I've been a full-time officer since 2017. In the last six years, I've been shift commander, which is a senior patrol officer and a sergeant is not present. I have over 1,400 hours of shift command alone. I also, like I said, obtained a bachelor's degree from Westfield State University. And three, I joined the army in 2011 as a private. I've gone through all of the ranks to sergeant, staff sergeant. And now I'm appointed as a warrant officer, and in a few months, I'll be appointed a chief warrant officer too. So I'm trying to do as much education as I can, as well as experience, taking shifts whenever available.
Thank you. Officer Parker, can you describe the traits of a good leader? And which traits do you have and which do you need to work on?
The traits of a good leader, honesty, understanding. I have, I would say empathy towards others as well, you know, citizens as well as other officers, humility. I like to lighten the mood as well as, you know, in our job, we deal with certain stressful situations more than the average person. And I think mostly honest integrity. I was told by Lieutenant Taggart one time, I'm honest to a fault and I, some people don't like that. I will tell you straight out it is, to the point. Just being a leader, looking out for others. Again, going back to the army, I was a sergeant and a staff sergeant in active duty as well as reserves. I was gone for 13 months on mobilization and I was in charge of my units. I was gone for thirteen months on mobilization and I was in charge of my unit's whole out processing. Basically, my commander saw that I have leadership skills. I've, and I've gone to. Basic leaders course, advanced leaders course, warrant officer candidate course and warrant officer basic course. So they basically set me up. Basically my national leader, I'm sorry, national. Um, basically leader attributes and I like to look, I always look out for others. Um, another example would be. Um, I worked the B shift, which is the evening four and midnights. I've always looked out for others and make sure, you know, we all, all the guys I work with have young kids. I make sure they can see, you know, say goodnight to their kids, go home if they can for a little bit, grab their food. And if they don't eat before, I won't eat my meal unless they eat their meal. Just an example, like I always put them before myself. Um, selfless, selfless service.
As a commanding officer, how would you handle a domestic incident involving another police officer?
In general or from our agency?
Either.
I would call the the next supervisor if it was someone senior to me, I would call the chief. And if that was, say it was actually the chief, I would call state. Um, that way it's a non-biased, you know, first we have to investigate the domestic regardless. But if we have to make an arrest, I would go to the, the either lieutenant or chief and if it was one of our own, I'd go to state. But regardless, if I had to make an arrest, I would make an arrest.
Garrett, give an example of a significant situation when you were put in command or had to take command and please explain what you did and why.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Give an example of a significant situation where you were put in command or had to take command and explain what you did and why.
Last night we had a domestic arrest at the same time. There was a two-car crash. Lieutenant Taggart was with me, but at the same, we were dealing, we were arresting the male party, same time a two-car crash came through, so. We delegated tasks. I took Officer Holtean and the arresting subject, I guess you could say. Back to the station and I went through the whole booking process, made sure everything was done, called the sheriff's office, let them know that we had a, we had a prisoner to transport. And basically because I knew Lieutenant Taggart was busy with the more vehicle crash, I made through, made through all the boxes, checked everything. Upgraded Lieutenant Taggart with what we had. And um basically just made sure that the job was done so he could just sign it and ship him out to the jail.
You're dispatched to a motor vehicle rollover and you determine that there are fatalities. Explain how you would work through the incident, what services are needed and which notifications are necessary.
First, again, I would make sure fire and ambulances are on scene. We have a critical incident management training we've done. I, I know that's offered and we also do an after action debrief. Uh, mental, mental awareness is huge right now. I can't think of exactly what it's called, but basically there's a, an office that comes here and talks to everybody involved. Um, I would, if I was a senior officer, after the scene was safe and complete, I would notify the family myself. And I would go there in person. I wouldn't, I would try my best to not go over the phone. If it was a different agency, say in a different state, I would call their supervisor. Um, I just wouldn't want to, uh, the most humane person is, or humane way of doing it is face-to-face. And then again, debrief with my own guys and girls to make sure everybody was okay with what they saw or get the help that they need.
As a supervisor, you'll have tips with minimum staff and if a major incident occurred. How would you secure the necessary personnel to cover the incident and other calls for service?
So we actually have that quite often. Uh, we use code red. So basically we have it on our phones. A lot of times if we're tied with that, we have dispatch code red. And on the event that nobody calls back in the next fifteen minutes, we have the same call and order in list. And it basically goes down to the next, the bottom five officers in a, in a rotation of who has the least amount of hours. Um, and then I would just call them, call the person who's next. If they don't answer, I would just work my way through it until we get to somebody.
Garrett, you will receive citizen complaints involving officers under your command. What steps will you take to address the complaint with the complainant and the officer?
Well, first I would meet with whoever the complainant is. We have a form. I would sit down with them, have them fill out the form in their own words. Basically discuss with them what they thought, you know, basically what they, what their issue was. I would look through the log or maybe it was a, you know, a pass from the night a couple of weeks ago or just happened. Read the report, discuss it with that person and then speak with the officer involved and try to come to a common grounds. And then I would let the um, the complaint person know what the after review was.
Thank you.
Garrett, how do you plan to encourage and develop the officers below you?
Motivating. Um, I like to work a lot of hours. I help to. I show other officers, so as you all know, um, details and overtime, we work a lot. The younger officers, I try to lead them and I know what it's like to be ordered in frequently. I try to take shifts to alleviate their order ends. Um, just to basically show what a leader is, you know, they, and I've had people come up to me who are lower than me and thank them for taking a shift voluntarily because they might have a. Uh, event with their family or their kids or a baseball game as well. So we're just to show them. That, I, I, again, I have empathy towards them and basically try to inspire them to also look out for the next officer below them.
Silence is terrifying.
It is.
I hate interviews, to be honest with you. We're halfway done.
You're taking the clock away from me.
What are two of the most important things that you've learned from your own patrol sergeants that you would pass on?
Uh, so I can't say enough about Lieutenant Taggart. Um, I was on midnight shift, so I was on all the shifts since I've been hired. I was on midnight. I have a soon-to-be three-year-old. I went to Midnight's willingly when he was born for childcare. Um, this past winter, I was approached by Lieutenant Banish and Chief Landis. About going back to the evenings and I specifically requested to work, I will, my only condition was to work under Lieutenant Taggart. I see myself in, in all the sergeants. I see qualities, but I see myself the most out of my tagger. Can you just read that one more time?
What are the, two of the most important things you've learned and would pass on?
Um, so he always told me when I'm making a decision, when I, you know, because what he gives you enough. To make a decision on your own, but he's also there to, if you need guidance, he has always told me. When I'm making a decision, is it safe to do so? And is it right? If you do those two, you'll never violate policy. Um, two. Uh, just like I told you, empathy, humility. He's the one that you can talk to. Just as a person, you know, he has kids, his wife and kids. At the same time, he's been around for many years. He'll give you advice on careers, education. We talked about going back for my master's degree the other night. I just, I would say honesty, empathy are his main qualities that I see.
Garrett, anything you want to say to us?
Uh, I just want to recap. Um, like I said, I have experience here. I, I've been there for eight years. I have a bachelor's degree. I'm considering going back for my masters. And I've been in the army for, I mean, on thirteen years and I just think I'm a great candidate, very well-rounded. And I look forward to hearing from your decision.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
They'll lose them otherwise. All right, lastly, we have. Officer Kyle Sanders.
You timed out?
Yeah, I got it.
Got to exchange your sleep. Sleep mode.
Same password, you have different variations.
Well, you always know this one.
All right, Kyle, we've got ten questions for you and we are going to start with question number one with Miss Gill.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Don't look so grim. Okay, tell us what are your career goals, including furthering your education?
So, um, my career goals within the department certainly would be um obtaining the rank of sergeant. From going from sergeant within five years, I'd like to see myself as the community policing officer. I believe I come from a long family of community policing, uh, with. My last four years in the schools, I've made great relationships with the juveniles and youths in the area. Um, starting the Rad Kids Program this last year and successfully graduating almost a dozen kids. I see myself bringing that forward to not only the youth in the area. But expanding that to the general public with different. Uh, groups as far as trying to bring back Citizens Police Academy. And bringing things like the Smoke Free Beach Day that used to be at the Town Beach where the police department would invite. The public to have a day, hot dogs, hamburgers with the police, playing yard games and everything like that. And have the opportunity for them to all meet the police officers that are serving them. I understand that the community policing officer has generally been during the day shift time. However, I don't see as long as my administrators would be okay with it. If I would still be on a evening shift, having that community police enrolled at nighttime is still important as well. Currently, we have a lot of good programs as far as with the trunk or treat and similar things like that. Like to see having a police officer's night out where we bring fire personnel as well as. Uh, state police with possibly the helicopter and all the different assets that serves the community. Letting people climb in these seats and seeing them. Through the school, I bring in the fire department, I bring in the DPW. To give the young kids a chance to jump inside the trucks, sit in the bucket of the big loader. And give them the opportunity to see what actually is going on in their community.
Thank you.
Smoke free?
That was the, uh, Smoke Free Beach was the, the event that would take place, because.
So Lieutenant Banish wasn't cooking hamburgers. I had to, I think, I had to, so I've been waiting for it, so. All right, now I will put a little levity in, so. Kyle, how have you prepared yourself to become a command officer?
So within my time at the school, um, while I'm day-to-day going, talking to administrators at. Each level, whether it be principals, vice principals, counselors, superintendents, everyone through my daily work. Everything in that, in that realm fell under me to then guide to whether it be teachers that are seeking advice. Whether it's counselors, how I'm lending my hand, I am also, also directly working under Detective Sergeant Krucka. However, a lot of times because it's just me in the schools. Having to develop that and then bringing in fellow officers to meet the kids, walk through the schools. And also responding back to patrol sergeants, lieutenant-in-chief. What, what areas are in need for our kids during the nighttime, what issues that are happening? And also, I, I can continue on that because you said continuing education correctly, so. I am a big proponent on training. I will go attend any training that the, my administrators. Think that one I would need to go to, but also I would advocate for myself, depending on what the issues would be happening during my shift. And things that I would need more techniques on, whether it be interviewing skills, whether it would be. Um, how to relate to elderly population or. Any, so, any, any form of issues that is happening during my time. Certainly I would want to bring back and leadership skills because. Uh, I will be, there are lots of great leaders out there that I would love to learn from, not only that I've learned from in my department.
Well, that's an excellent segue. Describe the traits of a good leader. Which traits do you have and which do you need to work on?
So, I believe a great leader needs to be honest. He needs to. Show his troops under him that he is going to be a man of his word. He is going to. Not only talk the talk about what somebody should be doing, but they should also be leading by the example of their word. If they are requesting people to per our policies and procedures and write in the job description of a sergeant where. We are going to be make, ensuring that our officers are arriving on time, that they're punctual, that they are. Dressed accordingly, that the uniforms are not in a, in a state of distress. I would arrive exactly about how those officers should also be showing up to work. I believe that I have great communications, communication skills as well as listening skills. I believe that communication is a key to any business, never mind the police world where. As I would correlate the information given to me by the patrolman under me. I would then as a chain of command, report that forward to the lieutenant-in-chief properly to the point where nothing gets missed. At, uh, we have roll call every day where the officers are meeting with the shift sergeants. At this time, this is where patrolmen will bring up their, could be what's bothering them personally with work. Could be what's happening in the street. It would be at this time where I would correlate that properly with my administrators above me. Where this would not just be a complaint fest, but also a constructive time where we'd be able to bring that forward. A weakness of mine, I believe that when I believe in something very strongly, I can be. Hard to dissuade me. However, I have worked on that by taking a step back after, before making an action. And remembering that there are plenty of people who have great ideas that are not my own. I would be becoming a sergeant with officers that patrolmen that I work with, who are senior in time for me. Who certainly would have, who, who do have more experience in certain issue, areas that I do. And I would be able to listen to them, take a step back and constructively use their information they're laying to me. That being said, if the final quality I would leave would be decisive. And that is where if a decision needs to be made, then a decision will be made. I know that I can trust in myself, my training. And the policies and procedures of the department to make the correct decision. It may not be every decision that everyone would make, however, it would be the decision that if we needed to make one, I would be happy to do so.
As a commanding officer, how would you handle a domestic incident involving another police officer?
So a domestic incident involving another police officer, right, we'll, we'll start with. For our policies and procedures where depending on what the rank of that officer is, if they are a sergeant. Then lieutenant would be brought in if this was a, and, and therefore and so forth until possibly if needed be. If the chief of police would arise. This also goes for not just for a police officer in this town. But responding to a depart, or a police officer of another town following our policies and procedures. Going by, if, if it's a situation that I will handle, this is facts are, this is facts are facts. And being fair, and at the end of the line, hopefully working with a colleague on this issue, they would understand. They would understand that these are the facts in front of us, trying to de- de-escalate them the entire time with understanding that. This is the issue, this is what happened, and then following through if, if at any point. The domestic had become physical, acting accordingly with mass general law. And placing someone under arrest if they need to be placed under arrest. That being said, the, our efforts should not stop there with the domestic as soon as the scene is over. There are behavioral health app, network alliances that we've created, that the administration of clear, created this past year. Which would allow us to bring in those extra services, whether it be, um. Counseling, or it could be issues where depending on what the situation involved as far as the domestic itself. As far as if there is children involved, making sure that the department, the department of children and families were properly notified. Both on the online forum and verbally over the phone. If I can take that one step further, using these services, I'd like to ensure that all the officers working under me. Are proficient in using the online portal of the department and children and families. So this way, not only can they track their case, but they can properly file that with the department when they make their verbal. Filing of the incident.
Kyle, give an example of a significant situation you were put in command or had to take command, please explain what you did and why.
Okay, um. I'm gonna use an example from my time of being a school resource officer. I'll, some details of this due to the nature of my example, I'm gonna leave out, I'm not gonna mention schools names. Or administrators themselves. But I believe it answers this question properly where. It was a Friday afternoon and. A child had disclosed that they had been sexually assaulted. A counselor had brought this forward to my attention, I immediately responded to that school. At which time I ca, I attempted to contact my superiors. However, due to the timing of life, of, um, absences and vacations. I was advised to handle the ins, or incident properly myself, that a superior would not be able to respond. At that point, I made sure to work with that building's administrator, the school counselors to first. Make sure that child was okay and not to disrupt the investigation itself. I advised the counselor to not ask any further questions, simply be there for the child. But don't look any further into it as the first complaint protocols we have. I then made sure to contact that parent and have that parent respond to the school. So we could speak with them in person because of the nature of what happened. I then contacted the Department of Children and Families to get them involved immediately. Due to the incident, once the parent arrived at school, which made it. I would say more difficult, me personally, is as I knew the parent from outside of the police world. So having that parent come in and ensuring them and. Not only that everyone will do everything they can and then try to. Speak to that individual the best way I could possibly could in order to change those feelings of anger, sadness. And everything that comes with hearing just something about your child. And making sure everyone's on the same page as far as knowing that we need to all show that this child is, everyone is there for them. That that parent has everyone's support, that child never did anything wrong, and that to go from there. Once the parent was united with the child. And ensuring with corroborating law enforcement agencies that that, that home was safe. For the child to return to, the family left the school. At which point I followed up with all the different, um, agencies involved. Over the next few hours to make sure all the proper arrangements were made for, to ensure that child's safety.
Thank you, Kyle. Officer, you're dispatched to a motor vehicle rollover and you determine that there are fatalities. Explain how you would work through the incident, what services are needed and which notifications are necessary.
Okay, so. I would like to start with the immediate dispatch right over the radio. Robbie had me advised that there is a severe car accident that take, that took place on whichever road that that may be. At which point I am contacting to have EMS support arrive appropriately per their protocols to such an event that's being reported us. I would be asking for them to respond before my arrival to, or that their dispatch prior to my arrival to get that ball moving as soon as possible. Because seconds means lives in this case. Once we arrive and we've made sure that the scene is safe for all. Uh, emergency personnel, road would then, the traffic most likely will be absolutely stopped. Assets will be later called in for detours and everything like that. I would assist with me and my officers under me to provide the best medical care we can for those victims in the car. As this is further developed, I would make sure, and the scene is determined safe. And it is determined that we do have fatalities on scene, I'm then going to contact my superiors and advise them of the incident itself. Going forward in, in the event that there are no supervisors available, being as though most likely there will be a road closure for this event. The town administrator would also need to be notified that the road has been closed down for, until proper. Emergency, everything can be taken care of, including that of having the state police. CPAC show up, their investigative unit show up to do a proper analysis of the actual scene. After everyone has been identified, life-saving measures have ceased. And the fire department has determined that the, um. Individuals involved are no longer with us. And it was determined that everything that it's time, the scene is safe, state police have shown up. That, um, we have done everything we can on scene. At this point, we are, I will be. Most likely myself, and in the past historically has been the detective, but once again saying he's not available. Then it would be myself as the supervisor responding to the home. And certainly with the either standby from a, uh. From the fire department as far as having an ambulance available for the family as we make this death notification. As you do not know how a family may react, could be elderly, this could lead to heart attacks. Certainly, as with everything in our police world, we have protocols to follow regarding the, um, death notifications. Part of this is bringing, you know, asking to enter the home to speak with the individual where they're gonna hear the bad news. You are then going to ask the person to sit down, they, they may become aggressive with you. And they may just demand right from the door that you say what you have to say. If, if that's what it takes, however, the first, the main thing you're doing when you're making a death scene notification is you're not leaving this person alone. You are working with them to get through the anger, the denial phases which come from this. Personally, having been a part of this, I know that giving a mother. Of their twenty-four-year-old daughter, saying there's no way that that was my daughter, until she saw the daughter's car keys in my hand. And she could see her keychain, having do this and then. Just like any person, you become emotional as well. And working through everything you can as a compassionate person, you work with that person to make sure that they're not alone. That at that point, if we're bringing family members in, no matter what, at this point, if they're having that hard of time, we're shortness of breath and deep breathing. You can ask ma'am or mister, would you prefer that I have an ambulance member? Come in and, and just make sure that you're okay, we want to make sure that you yourself don't end up in the hospital when you need to be there for your families as well. And then making sure, and then not for, in incidents, there's also times. When family members and children are there and making sure that they have the proper assets. That being said, this is one of the great things that having our behavioral health network connection as we do. And trying to arrange that there's an emergency response for them to be there on, at the house. To right away from the start, bring them the emergency services they need from counselors and everybody else to assist them with what's going to happen.
Thank you.
Ready?
As a supervisor, you'll have shifts with minimum staffing. If a major incident occurred, how would you secure the necessary personnel to cover the incident and other falls for service?
So originating from the midnight shift and just as. Par the course, or however, when you want to say it, bare minimums tend to happen on the midnight shift or certainly did in the past. And you work through your shift as you, as you have to. We have great mutual aid officers between Agawam, Suffield, Westfield, Granby. That if you need a unit, which has happened in the past, where they will be there to support you. If, if there's no harm or in your pride or anything else to secure the emergency assets you need to maintain everyone's safety. That also goes for knowing that if. Like two, same, same goes for the communities as well, where I've responded into another town to assist them and having that. That good relationship with our neighbors to make sure that Southwick always has what they need. That being said, unfortunately, because if you are at a minimum staffing, there may be the hard decision that I would have to make as a supervisor. Where if a neighboring community is asking for those assets, and if we are not unable to provide for them, we'll do the best we can to give them what they need. But it would be that call saying we are unable to provide because we still need to provide for our town of Southwick.
Kyle, you will receive citizen complaints involving officers under your command. What steps will you take to address the complaint with the complainant and the officer?
So. Per the creation of post. For police reform and everything like that, every complaint is taken seriously. If a immediate complaint is happening where the person is having a disagreement with my officer. If available, certainly to de-escalate the situation, I will do my best to remove those. The officer and that person from engaging, I'll ask my officer to step to the side and have another officer step in. However, if that is not possible, then I will advise the, the, the. Involved party, the reporting, the complaining party, that sir, this is where we are right now and I will. Personally assist them with a complaint at a later time, right now at the scene, this is what we have to work with. And then hope that person is understanding. As far as complaints go, they would also be forwarded to my administrators. Both lieutenant in chief would become aware as chain of command would, uh, prescribe. Can you repeat the second part of the question, please?
Um, so it's what's, you are received citizen complaints involving officers under your command. What steps will you take to address the complaint with the complainant and the officer?
Okay, following up with the officer after I have made arrangements with the complaining party, what. About what the discrepancy is with that officer, I would then speak to that officer if it needed immediate action. As far as depending on what the complaint entailed, if the. If the complaint fell under the supervisory roles as far as if they are a clear violation of. That person's civil liberties, if there was an abusive force claim, if there's any of these things, then it would. Hopefully already been handled along with the person complaining, I would be right there with them. Now, as far as the officer, it would be. If it is something as simply as a talking to and then bringing that forward necessary, which as I would, uh. Speak with the lieutenant regarding the incident, if I can advise lieutenant that I believe I personally as that supervisor. As that officer supervisor, if I believe I have handled that properly, I would then advise the lieutenant that I believe I handled this. And if it was a low level enough incident, I would. We, I would ask that lieutenant respect my decision on believing that I have held the proper. Standard with my officer underneath me on my shift. However, it will be ultimately at the discretion of the lieutenant in chief on what happens to that officer after that. But it would, but it would no matter what be forwarded to them for their, um. Review.
Thank you. How do you plan to encourage and develop the officers below you?
So. I would lead by example, if an officer would, is having issues. Back up a second, sorry. Leading by example is ensuring that my officers know that I would never ask them to do something that I would not do myself. I would always show them that you, you know, you, you should be proactive. Our police department went through a lot of, lots of staffing issues in the past where, which led us as a, running a minimum shift. Led us to do more reactive versus proactive. Those times are thankfully, we're, we're getting past them, where I believe now we could be proactive with the car stops. Proactive with the community engagement, certainly by. Regardless on what shift you're in, but in the evening shift specifically. Showing just traffic driving through town, that traffic stops are happening can deter crime from happening. The officers are proactive, they're making stops, they're, they're, it's not showing that anyone is just free to drive through Southwick at any time. Certainly, as far as developing officers, I believe, well, I, I know for sure I have came a long way from when I sat in this chair interviewing. As a reserve police officer in two thousand twelve to where I am sitting now. Um, I have had lots of great leaders which. Are, are, are now in very well-seeded positions. That have taught me everything I know and I'd like to follow up with what they have taught me.
Well, you led right into that last question. What are two of the most important things you've learned from those patrol sergeants that you would pass on?
So, two of the most important things I think I've learned is always remain open-minded to other ideas. And this is as a. Could be a patrol sergeant, I don't care, you could be lieutenant in chief. Someone who is new to the department after a year could be bringing something to the town that hasn't been thought of before. And being open-minded to listen to those ideas, to bring those forward is very key. Not to be stuck in your ways, and there is always more than one way to get to the same place. And that maybe, and being willing and open-minded to work with yourself. To get to that other point and not being stubborn or steadfast in your. Decisions on how you're gonna do something, but having a better understanding. I, I, I touched on this before, but having work as you lead, it really does show you that if, if the patrol sergeant is out there. Doing the reports, if they're out there making the car stops, if they're out there. Doing stuff that would be expected of a officer underneath them. Then there would be no reason that that officer could ever say that you are not doing what you should be doing. You're, you're making, you're, you're setting the bar at where you want your bar in your shift. I would want my shift to be, to be very tight-knit to the point of there's no. There's no room for error, there's no showing up late because I would be showing up early. Learn, teaching something that my grandfather taught me a very long time ago is if, if you're on time, you're late. And if you're early, you're not early enough. So just having that preparedness ready every day you're showing up, ready to go, because lots of times, just by chance. Those emergency calls do come in at that quarter of the hour when people are just putting their bags down. Now, as the midnight shift is on, or the. The previous shift is just on the other mentality of I'm that close to going home, having your guys ready to answer that call. And it could be something serious where a bad car accident happens and you need to be ready at the minute. Or it could be you as the oncoming shift where you have eight and a half hours ahead of you. Maybe the, maybe the shift before you does not need to go do that lockout right before they're about to unload their car and have someone else go in. But you'd be able to take that call and then work that right into the rest of your tour.
Thank you.
That's it. So Kyle, anything you'd like to get to the board?
Sure. I would like to thank each select board member. I would like to thank each select board member from giving me this opportunity to interview for this important supervisor role. Want to emphasize that I want to become a sergeant because I know I'm ready for the next step. I have the knowledge, experience, and leadership qualities of being decisive, able to listen and communicate on all levels, and understand compassion, and able to utilize discretion to benefit not only those who'd serve under me, the, the Southwick Police Department and the town of Southwick. In 2013, shortly after becoming cruiser qualified to work a patrol shift, I had the opportunity to work as a provisional officer working on the midnight shift. As a new officer working, working with Sergeant Fisk, I knew no matter what type of call and how stressful and scary it may have seemed at the time, I knew that I would get through it and I'd be going home in the morning. That's the type of sergeant I want to be. One that not only shows the officer under him that they'll go home safely, but has the knowledge, experience, and communication skills to teach them what they need to succeed. I'd like to mention that my wife and I have had many discussions on the lifestyle changes that I would, that we would experience as a family with changing from the day shift historically, from changing from the day shift to the evening shift. And both, and we both agree that it will take some getting used to, but this is a great opportunity. And when we started dating, I was on midnights, so it's not completely new to us. That being said, I would like to leave with a sentiment that I'm ready to start tomorrow, I'm ready to start tomorrow if honored with the position of sergeant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
I'll take a five. Um, if you'd like to, please. All right, gonna take a short recess. Yeah. As far as I'm concerned, yes. I'm only one guy though. We're back in session with the select board meeting. We are going to take a little, we're going to take something out of contact, uh, order here right now. Uh, it's been approached by the deputy, we're going to take the appointment of the call firefighters, wherever they are, we're going to take that and do that right now, chief.
Sure, very good. We have two.
We're gonna interview them one at a time?
Yep. Same questions?
Yeah, same ones, pretty much, yeah.
So good afternoon. We have two candidates tonight for call force firefighters. Um, our first is Randy Goldberg. Please have a seat.
Not a problem to me at all.
Very nervous about this after the last interview question, so.
We're gonna go through the same ten, you ready?
So Mr. Goldberg, you want to be a call force member?
Correct.
Tell us about yourself.
Uh, well, I'm a resident here in Southwick, been here eighteen years. Um, I operate two restaurants, uh, supervise roughly close to thirty people between the two. Um, I'm also on the Hoyoke auxiliary traffic. Um, it used to be Hoyoke auxiliary, but they switched that with the reform and everything, so. Um, but I'm currently with them as well. Uh, and, um, the reason why I want to be the on-call force is because obviously I live here in Southwick and, um, kind of like what I did with Hoyoke. Um, I had owned and operated a couple businesses in Hoyoke. So when the opportunity came up to give back to the community, I took that opportunity to help them out over there. So I'd like to do the same over here. Um, you know, being here for as long as I've been here and, um, you know, I know a lot of places could use extra hands, so. Here I am.
Pretty sure the chief can.
Ready, brother?
I do. I have one brother, one sister, both older. Probably wouldn't.
Chief?
I have a question.
What?
Because I ask every applicant the same question.
Oh, gosh.
So what's standing between you and being a call force member?
What's standing between me becoming a call force member? Nothing.
Be close, so pretty much nothing.
There you go. I, I thought you were referring to outside of.
So I would be looking for a motion to appoint Mr. Goldberg as a call force member.
I'll make a motion to appoint Randy Goldberg to the call force firefighter.
Doug Mogan will second the motion.
Roll call vote, Jason Pearl and I.
Thank you.
Doug Mogan, aye. Nothing standing.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our second candidate tonight is Jack Grady, uh, for firefighter position for call force. There, wherever you're comfortable.
I'll sit right here.
Yeah, that's already one done. How are you, Josh? Doug Mogan?
Good, how are you?
Jax, nice to meet you.
Sorry, I'm at the end.
So Jax, you want to be a call force firefighter?
Yes, I do.
And why would you like to do that?
Um, well, I didn't really know what I wanted to do when I got out of high school. I went.
Gonna say, when I got older, I could, gonna say, please don't tell me you're gonna say that.
No, um, I went to Western New England for a semester, and I, I was an engineering major. I was taking classes that had nothing to do with what engineering was. And I was just like, this isn't worth it, especially spending that money. I just, it's not the path I wanted to go down. It didn't excite me. And, um, my mother was, she's a nurse.
Mm-hmm.
And she was like, oh, I think you'd like medical a lot. And I had a lot of guys also like, you should try fire out. And then they were like, you can kind of do both and it works great. And I was like, yeah, that sounds like a really good path, like I might want to pursue this. So while I was in school, I signed up for an EMT course at Westfield State. And, um, then I kept going, I fell in love with it, and now I ended up here.
Terrific, that's great. Um, Landford Country Club, you're still gonna maintain that job?
Uh, no, I'm not at the Landford anymore.
Oh, okay, I see that.
Yeah, I was there for, I think, three or four years.
Okay.
Now, now I'm working, um, full-time with my father. He does roadside mowing. He owns two companies.
I was gonna ask that question.
Yeah.
So Chris is your dad.
Chris is my father, yeah. So I worked full-time with him, which is kind of why this job works out perfectly, because I'm like, hey, I gotta work this day, I gotta work this day. And it's really lenient, I don't have to worry about taking time off with him or something like that.
And you like the outdoors?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chief, any input on this one?
Excellent candidate, young, good direction, and decisive.
And also maybe you can put him in the right direction if he doesn't either, so.
He's very zone.
Mr. Mogan?
Should I ask him the same thing? My mind is like, right?
So. Huh? Hopefully he was listening.
Well, hopefully you were listening.
Yes.
So what's standing between you and becoming a member of our call force?
Right now, just this, I guess.
Motion. We'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to point Jack's Grady firefighter EMT on the call force.
I'll gladly second the motion.
Roll call vote, Jason Pearl and aye.
Thank you.
Doug Mogan, aye. Congratulations.
Didn't even need any pride.
No, that was great.
All right.
Thank you, John.
All right, we're gonna go back where we left off, and we are going to discuss the board discussion on cannabis application process and questions. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one quick note. Uh, this morning, uh, out of an abundance of caution, I believe, I did file, um, a mass general law two sixty-eight A twenty-three B disclosure.
Okay.
In reviewing some of the applications, I know, I noticed that one of the applicants is for a piece of property owned by an entity that also owns the facility in which I work.
Okay.
So I don't believe it to be an issue. I believe I will be fair and impartial. But I did put that on record with the town clerk, which will be then sent to the select board, and I delivered, hand-delivered a copy to Nadine this morning.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Mogan. Okay, so this was brought forward. Mr. Jaren, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good evening.
Good evening. So this has been a topic that's, that popped forward after the last meeting. Um, honestly, I, I partially put some of the fact that I, this should have come up on the last meeting. Um, when you brought that forward, Ms. Gale, we, we had made the motion to have you review for criteria. Um, when we made that motion, I wasn't aware that we were going to be disqualifying anybody at that point, because as the RFI reads, the board is really the only one that should be doing any disqualifications.
That's not how it reads.
Um, can you point to me where it does, it says that?
I, I will when you.
Okay, well, you know, the way I read the RFI, it's the select board that needs to disqualify any applications, um, as a board. Um, my concern with this is it's, to me, it's protecting the town as well as the, the process. There, as I read through the process when this came out the other day, um, there's too many mays. We have no definition as to what requires a may. I'm gonna just come right out and say this. In my opinion, Mr. Jaren's application needs to come forward and be scored. That's all I'm gonna say. There, there is no preference here. Anybody who wants to ask, as far as my concern, I do not care who gets the cannabis licenses. I want everybody to know that. I think the proper thing to do is the way this process was written out, there are some flaws in it, and we need to address that after the fact. But right now, the process states in several places that their, their opportunity to submit information should have been given to Mr. Jaren. That's the way I personally read it. Um, I have a few other notes, but I'm gonna listen to what you have to say, Ms. Gale.
Okay. First of all, a response to Mr. Jaren was prepared on Tuesday, six eighteen, and was to be delivered via the C A O after she was brought up to date on the topic. But Jason, as the chair, you objected more than once to having any communication sent, which I don't understand. Instead, insisting that it would be discussed on the agenda on the next select board meeting, almost two weeks away, which is today.
Mm-hmm.
Out of respect for the objection from the chair, I remained silent and I expected as much from you, particularly since you hadn't even seen the information about the review of the submissions yet. Seeing that an uninformed opinion was given to the press before we even met on the topic, as was directed, I consulted with town council and was cleared to then advise Mr. Jaren directly of the deficiencies in their submission, which were substantial in number and not insignificant in value. This board had this RFI since March and early April, and the only questions raised were my own as to how they wanted to proceed on some aspects and to the date of release. This board was responsible for reading that RFI and understanding it. There were ample opportunities for further discussion and if not completely understood or in agreement, opportunities to raise questions and concerns. None of the questions were raised until after the deadline and the submissions were qualified. Every draft and the final RFI included the following. Overview of application process. The town reserves the right to reject any application it deems to be incomplete. However, it may at its discretion, may at its discretion request that the omitted information or further clarification be provided by the respondent. The town is any representative so designated to act on the process. As to omitted information in this case, the omissions were substantial in number and significant importance and were all items clearly defined in the requirement section. Under application review in the RFI, applications will be subject to detailed review by the select board as to whether a respondent has met the minimum criteria to move forward for negotiation of a host community agreement. The select board is any representative so designate to act on the process. On six seventeen twenty-four, Diane Gale was designated in quotes on the agenda to review marijuana application packets against submission requirements to move forward to select board review. This clause in the RFI immediately follows the application review section. Selection process. Respondents deemed qualified by the application review by the select board may be invited to enter in negotiations with the board. The RFI closes with the following. Compliance with RFI requirements. Respondents providing submissions to this RFI are expected to follow its requirements. Failure to comply with the requirements of any portion of this RFI may result in disqualification from the review process. This RFI is consistent with others from, from other cities and towns that it was modeled from, and it's been reviewed by town council as well as this board. This board also designated one select board member to review marijuana retailer application packets against submission criteria to move forward to the select board review. The review of submissions was unbiased and was not to seek out missing materials from the packets, but to move forward those that were in compliance, regardless of who they were from. There are four qualified, detailed, and comprehensive submissions that were in full compliance with all of the requirements without question. Those were moved forward to the board. I, like you, was very surprised by the volume and weight of the omitted information from this particular submission. Because we're surprised at the outcome after following our own directives is not a valid reason to now restate the rules and hit restart.
You left opportunities in this RFI process for that individual to add individually. This, again, this has nothing to do whether it's Mr. Jaren or any of the other.
We had every opportunity.
If I wanted you to disqualify an application, I would have said, review criteria to disqualify. The way this is written, it was never made clear to me that we were gonna disqualify anybody ahead of this.
We discussed it.
Uh, I understand we discussed it, but it was never made clear to me that we were going to disqualify any and further, in their scoring criteria, it even says, all initial RFI respondents will be evaluated. He, he needs to be, this is. Well, that's another thing. All I am saying is, Mr. Jaren's application, this board can make this decision, and if they don't agree with me, that's fine. But, and it is fundamentally fair to, to, if you put rules in, uh, opportunities in place that allow for omitted information, CCC itself will reach back out to candidates. I wouldn't, I didn't go over this lightly, Diane. I didn't. You know, and you're right, as I surprised at the amount of stuff that was omitted, absolutely.
Honestly, I don't know that you went through it prior to this point. Well enough.
The, the RFI?
Yes.
You're a hundred percent right, and I admit that. Had I seen everything there.
Let's, let's back up ten thousand feet for a second. Hang on one sec. So let's just back up ten thousand feet. So, at the end of the day, I, I, I'm gonna trot this up to a couple of unique situations going on. Uh, and first of all, I want to thank Diane. Uh, and I too will sign on to the, I didn't read all this stuff a thousand times before we designated Di to, to review the RFIs. I, I did read it more than once. Um, but a lot of the devil's in the details. But, um, secondly, we had a vacancy in the CAO position. Okay, um, we had interim CAO who did yeoman work in keeping the town running day over day uh, until we were able to see um, our new CAO, Ms. Parker. However, I think what happened here is part of the RFI process was where um, a select board member was literally doing the work that should have been done in the CAO's office to vet the RFIs. And how they would have handled it may have been the same or different, I don't know. I'm not gonna guess because it, it's a fool's game. But backing up even further, this is a twenty-year decision. At least a five-year decision, but probably more like a twenty-year decision. And in the interest of the, doing the business of the people of the town of Southwick, um, we need to make sure that we put the best possible applicant in front of the board for review. Now, that being said, if we were to consider to allow anyone, and it's subject to a vote, vote of this board, and I am but one member, and I, obviously with open meeting law, I'm not allowed to discuss this with any of the other members, so we're all coming into this cold, so you're seeing the, the raw process play out here, is if we allow anyone to supplement their application with any additional information, there needs to be, it needs to be scored accordingly, like, you know, kinda like turning in your homework late, right? Minus fifty points or half score, whatever you're gonna do with it, right? And, and, and that needs to be where it's at, and I'm just putting that out there as a suggestion. Um, but you know, when we get past this process and you, and you, you decide who is going to get a license, it needs to be the person that we feel is going to be the most successful in that enterprise. Um, because we want them to do well, right? And it, yeah, there's money in it for the town, that's great. But we also want that to be a successful business for that business person. Um, and we're only gonna have two, and by the way I read it, one of them is gonna be an equity applicant, and that's it just how it's gonna be. So of the ones that are the non-equity applicants, they're competing for one license and, and what they consider an equity license is the other license. I could be wrong. That's how I read it so far. So, um, just food for thought, you know, I appreciate, we, you know, I received a letter from um, in my email, which I believe was from, uh, I don't have the name in front of me, because Mr. Jaren's partner.
Lisa.
She's here.
Hi, how are you?
Good, very good.
You know, basically falling on her sword, saying, maya culpa, this was all my bad. I, I get it. Um, and, you know, to me, I, I think it's bad form. I think that i- if we do take in any information, I, you know, I think we gotta look at that from the application standpoint, like, okay, you gotta follow the directions in the application and give us the information we were asking for. And if you didn't do it, that's not so much very good. And then we go from there, but I think and, and I, just last point of honesty, after our meeting two weeks ago, I was at about College Highway and Vining Hill Road when it dawned on me that Mr. Jaren's application wasn't amongst them, when I was fairly certain that he was going to apply. So, cuz literally bef, right before the meeting, I was given my, I call it my bag of marijuana, the whole, all the applications in a bag to go home and read. Um, but uh, so when I, you know, it was after that that I realized that Mr. Jaren's application wasn't set forth to me, and then I got the ones that I got. So that's just my take for, for further discussion here. And, and like I said, no disrespect to anyone here. I understand everyone's position. And I think, you know, I spent the most time on this as far as, you know, in the weeds with all the applications and all the data. Um, and um, I did ask the CAO to see if there was a checklist from each applicant, cuz I was pretty certain there would be, and there was, and it was very detailed about each application. There was a checklist of, this is here, this is here, okay? And then Mr. Jaren's is different from all the others with a lot of missing information.
And two people went through that independently.
So I don't doubt it. I, and I don't have any doubt, I don't have any, any, I don't have any problem with the process as it played out, other than I don't know that there could have been a window to request the additional information and, for whatever reason, we, it, it says may or shall or however, and we didn't do it. And I, I guess we all just gotta step back and take a look at this and say, are we doing right by the town? Forget Mr. Jaren, no disrespect, Mr. Jaren. Um, you know, forget Mr. Jaren for a second. Is that, if that application with all the information, a strong application, and that would be for the board to decide? And if it, and yes, great, gets a license. If not, no? Or do we just say, okay, you know, part of the assignment was to prove that you could handle the details in being in control of this, of this um, material and the substance is subject to all the regulations set forth by the ever-changing CCC and Mass General Law, and you know, we can't get the application in right, so therefore, we'll just move on with what we got.
And that was part of the exercise? And are we doing a fair justice to the four applicants who complied a hundred percent?
If I may interject, I, I don't know when I'm allowed to interject. So Jaren, can you hold on, please? I'm relaxed to allow him to speak.
Yeah, you know, Jaren, you know what they call a guy who graduates last from medical school, right?
Doctor. Go ahead and speak.
So first things, thank you to the officers that you guys interviewed prior for the community service, okay? If I can just take a second. Uh, listen, um, as you read the letter, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna make excuses. We missed a part of it. It was an intentional. Diane put a lot of effort and time, but so did we. You know, like you said, when you throw out one out of five, it's not like there's three hundred applicants here. And ultimately, the town residents will never hear the opportunity that I've been paying rent for five months for Roma to secure it. And, and I understand the application might be filled out by the other candidates, but if you don't even have a location or you're in negotiations with a church and you have a candidate that has paid rent, I have architectural drawings, I have two million dollars set aside for this project, I have Lisa can correct me, five, seven people that are ready to move in, and I can progress for the benefit of the town. Now, yes, it's an application. Listen, when I put in an application to make it simple, to remove a tree from my backyard, I don't expect the conservation just to say, denied, you forgot to fill this box. Somebody calls me, this wasn't a public bid here. This wasn't like there were candidates to pave a road. It was a request for information, and ultimately, I understand the other candidates, you know what? I'm dyslexic, I'm ADHD. This is stuff that I rely on staff. We screwed up, Doug. You have a good point. But ultimately, that lady sitting across from you guys has applied for a license for holy old cannabis that is very successful. She applied for a license for my grow facility and was very successful. She helped me with a transportation company. She renews my license. We know what we're doing. I think everybody on that council was agreed that I sat in town meetings and radio and where's the fairness to me? I don't see any of these, I don't remember in public discussions. And I think, I, I just think that that may and shall, I could have been afforded that opportunity, and I just want to let you know that I respect every one of you guys on the board. I disagree with how it went down. It's a process, because if I had a chance to interview, I could fill those parts out. If I had a chance, if you guys had a chance to go through the scoring sheet or ask me for some information, ultimately, it's about the town residents, and I can tell you, I've seen this process where people get licenses and the buildings stay vacant for two and a half years. You know, one of the questions, and I'm not gonna go through the questions, but a lot of the questions, I couldn't even answer them if you wanted to, a perfect one. How long is it gonna take you to open up a cannabis store? Well, I already have drawings. I already have lease. I already have contractors. I'm a master electrician, security. I can build this thing immediately. But if the CCC doesn't get back to me in four months or doesn't approve my drawings for six months, should I have just lied on the application and just put something to check a box? So, um, you know, I know some of the answers probably to Gail seem very short, but I thought I would have the opportunity to be interviewed and to talk about them and to explain them. So I'm a town resident, you know, we all talk about how are you gonna give preference to, to, to uh, employing people? How are you gonna pay? Well, I live in this town. Where in this application does it say a town resident's gonna have a, a, an override on somebody that's not? So we can debate this left and right, but I just want you guys to figure out the process, and I will abide by it. I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer guy. I, I respect everything you guys do, but my process has always felt that it's the board that makes the decision. And I think that uh, Jason and Doug don't even have a chance to, to see what I have to offer. And, and you know, so, you know, I, I just never thought the process was up to one board member. So why are all three of you guys sitting there? That Diane make the decision, and, and that's, and, and that's what happened is, you know, I just felt like you guys should think this out together, and it would be for the benefit, cuz I really truly believe that I'm the best at what we do here. You know, let me have a chance. Who else has a cannabis store? Okay, I do twelve million dollars and pay two million dollars in tax to that store only to a million. There's so many things that if I'm not interviewed, if it's just a paperwork, just disqualify me right now. If it's about because I didn't answer some questions or my office manager missed them and focused on the scoring sheet, I believe in fairness, but I just don't believe this was the process that you guys intended to be there. To disqualify twenty percent of your candidates because I didn't fill out some paperwork? And, and I didn't have a chance, I mean, it literally didn't take us thirty minutes to answer the questions, so.
Let him speak.
That's what I have to say. I mean, I don't want to take on too much time, but you guys will never have an opportunity to know who I am, and the town will never have an opportunity if they don't witness the interview.
James, I'd have to cut you off, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
This isn't exactly fair either, because none of the other candidates have an opportunity to speak here yet either.
So one of my problems with it is when you put, so you and.
I'm gonna say again, this was unbiased.
I, I, I am not saying this is biased at all, Diane. I do not think that of you in any way, shape, or form. As someone who deals with municipal contracts on a regular basis in my other job, we left windows open. Then, it should have been finite, that, that it ends complete.
If two or three insignificant factors.
No, you said may.
I would have filled in.
I'm sorry, you didn't even present the qual, the application for us to review.
I move to adhere to the process and execution that was proposed, reviewed by town council and voted on by this board and have the four submissions that met all of the requirements of the RFI scheduled for the July fifteenth twenty-four meeting to respond to any questions that the board may have from their independent review of the materials presented.
I'd offer a, um, um, an alternative motion that you review this with town council. Um, and then we, we, if necessary, meet as a board and executive session to review said files. Or you can report it back in open session at our next meeting to, to determine what's if, with any legal advice that may be required or necessary for this.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote. Jason Pro and aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
I will review.
I don't wanna close, and, and just, you know, I don't wanna close the door on this until, till we have advice on this and then.
I did all of. I did all of the rest and I have all the details. May I be designated to discuss it with Mr. Coyle?
I'd make that motion.
Report back to you.
Second motion. Roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
We will get back to everybody. And we'll let you know as soon as we have made a decision. And I would, I prefer to make the decision in private.
So it's just depend, I don't know what's the advice you're going to get from council, whether it's under litigation or something like that where we'd have to
Or you can send it to
And 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 Mrs. Porcker will be back next week, too. We can get her all up to speed on this and and she can help.
And I will say the same thing that Doug said, Diane. I can't thank you enough for putting this and shame on me for not digging, like Doug Doug said, the devil in the details. Some of this stuff doesn't jump out at you until it happens. And like I said, if this had been finite, I wouldn't even be asking this right now. Or even um, uh, taking Mr. Jaren's request into consideration. But we left windows open. And when you do that, and it's an R F I, it's not a contract.
Okay.
Well, I, yeah, and and well, let me get in the last word, I guess.
Okay.
Maybe. I just think, you know, I'll disagree, you know, Mr. Jaren makes some good points. I will disagree with him fundamentally on one thing, in that it's not, you know, it's not your, you know, bidding to pave a road or build a building or whatever, but the the person who gets that license is getting a license with significant, significant monies behind it. And, you know, the the ones that don't get that license will not enjoy that same opportunity. So therefore, the process needs to be, you know, it had to be rigorous and it was rigorous by design. Um, so, and like I said, and it's nothing personal against Mr. Jaren. I I spoke with Mr. Jaren, I met with him, he's super nice guy. But, you know, and we'll just, I'll let the the outcome from talking to Ben take precedence here. Thank you.
May I say, may I say one more thing?
No, I wouldn't.
James, let's call it a night.
No, 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 I promise, ten seconds. There will be no
No, James, 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 nope, nope, nope. Good night.
Thank you.
All right, now we're at that point. So now we are going to do payables, payroll and minutes.
It's all downhill from here, Jason, so.
We need to acknowledge payroll warrant number twenty four twenty six dated six eighteen six eighteen twenty twenty four and the amount of three hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and ninety five dollars and fifteen cents. Acknowledge payables warrant W two four three zero dated six twenty four twenty four and the amount of six thirty three, five, six, four, ten. And we are going to table approving the minutes along the last two meetings till next meeting. Action items.
Yeah, I picked the next sergeant tonight. I guess that's not important. It's not weed, it ain't nothing. Thank you.
Next, we are going to approve the bid award to Caracas Construction, including alternate one for nine hundred and seventy nine thousand, six hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars and zero cents for the Bungalow Street Reconstruction Project from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Looking for rent, spend a million bucks.
He was going to be on tonight because he has a change to this.
I'm here.
Yep, there he is.
Randy, can you give us an update on this, please?
Yeah, so this is a project, uh, we actually, we, uh, this is the second bid of this project for Bungalow Street. It includes, uh, utilizing community development block grant funds. We we took, uh, two years of funding and combined them into, uh, into one project. Um, so Pioneer Valley Planning, they did all the, uh, the legwork on this so far as far as, uh, developing the bid documents and opening the bids and reviewing them. Um, so we do have a low bidder, Caracas Construction. Um, they they actually constructed a very similar project in Southwick. I want to say six or seven years ago on Lakemont Street. Uh, no, I'm sorry, it was Veteran Street, uh, which is, uh, one street over from from Bungalow. A very similar project, um, the good contractor, uh, so we will be looking to award that contract to Caracas. Uh, as Diane noted, there was, uh, an error on that lab letter I'd sent you. Um, the the funding, so just to clarify, there is a total of one million two hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred thirty four dollars available for the project. Uh, part of that goes to the, uh, Fussin' O'Neil uh, for their bidding and construction phase services. And then the remainder is available for construction. So, uh, there is still, there are still dollars available um, for the construction. Um, I have that in front of me here. It was a hundred, hundred and nineteen thousand dollars was available for 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 construction contingencies. That makes sense. I think some of the confusion that we had was, uh, there's there's two pots of money available. And the numbers I got initially from Pioneer Valley Planning was looking only partial of someone's funds. So that's why there's there's a the numbers on that letter you have are 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 not correct.
Yes, Miss Miss Gill just pointed that out.
Thank you for clarifying that, Randy.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
So they had a million one seventy. It's really the one two. This one two nine in two pieces.
Hundred and twenty nine thousand of those. And that was underneath.
Okay, so the net hangover is the hundred and twenty nine.
Very good. All righty, thank you, Randy. Um, and I guess I'll be looking for a motion to approve awarding the contract to Caracas Construction.
Make a motion to approve that contract.
Want to get the dollar number?
Oh, sorry, for, I'm sorry, for the real number is nine seventy nine, six thirty nine to Caracas Construction.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Next, we're looking to approve the donation from the Friends of the Library for Summer Reading. Prize purchases in the amount of a hundred and ninety five dollars and eleven cents. Be looking for a motion.
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Next, we will acknowledge that the library has awarded a grant from the Shirtlifts Children's Services Incorporated in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred fifty two dollars and seventy eight cents to update our teen creation station, which is a video, music, photo editing and software for teens, as well as creates a cart with items for the teens who use the library after school, such as games. They are asking to put the amount into the library's gift account. Don't know if we need to approve that.
That's acknowledging the brand.
You have to accept it. So you vote, you make a motion to accept.
Right, make a motion to accept that grant then. Thank you, Doug.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
We need to approve and sign the elderly rate applications for nineteen Crescent Street and eight Depot Street.
Make a motion to approve those. Two.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
We need to approve the First Amendment to Town of Southlake Water Supply Agreement for the wholesale purchase of water with Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, which will extend the contract for an additional five years. Randy, you want to give any sort of update on this one?
Yeah, so, uh, this was, uh, if you recall back at our town meeting in May, there was an article regarding this contract, uh. So Springfield, we have a, we've had a wholesale contract agreement with Springfield Water and Sewer for many, many years. Um, this is, I know it's called Amendment One, but I think our most current version of that of that agreement was uh, from twenty nineteen, that that amendment or that contract ran through June thirtieth of this year. Uh, so this this will pick up for the next five years for that agreement. And this allows us to buy wholesale water through Springfield Water and Sewer.
Actually read the contract, Randy.
Good.
It was light reading, right?
Yeah, yep.
Um, I have no problem with this. I'll make a motion to, um, extend this contract.
And I actually, I've I've now learned my lesson to read everything word for word.
I'll second the motion.
And read that. And that was why I brought up the question, Randy, about the, uh, our water restriction, because I was reading the different types of restrictions. So thank you for getting that to me. And I would need a motion to approve this.
We did.
And second is
All right, roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
So we need to review the requests of Sterrett Drive and DeWitt Circle.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
I was going to ask, you probably have some background on this one.
Well, back about six thousand years ago, when I first got involved with all this stuff, so Sterrett and DeWitt both had lots off the end of it when that road was originally designed where there was going to be future development. And in fact, um, prior to two thousand fifteen, there was a preliminary design, and I don't recall if it came off of DeWitt or the top of Sterrett. I believe it actually came off of DeWitt. And then it would snake its way through, um, near the, near the ranch golf course and then come back to, uh, Mouse Hill Road down to Sunnyside Road, and it would be a through street. And so the two, two subdivisions would be, uh, connected, um, via Sunnyside and then, uh, Granville Road would actually be a pass through. Uh, that was met with, um, much consternation and a similar looking petition from the residents on that street to make that road private and not take the way. Since that time, uh, that lot on DeWitt was sold, the lot at the top Sterrett was sold. There still is a right of way at the top of Sterrett, but it is completely unfeasible that at any time in the foreseeable future that a road will be constructed at off of um, off of Sterrett somehow eventually connecting down through the Mouse Hill Road property to Sunnyside. That road is exceedingly long. It's 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 longer than permitted under our code um, because it was envisioned originally to connect. But being that it's never going to get connected, it would, and we do have, I don't, I don't even know the total number of homes up there, but it's probably north of twenty. Um, living on on homes in a residential subdivision that those people would normally expect that those to be town roads in the first place. Uh, the road's in pretty decent shape. Um, and I think that they're petitioning at this point for us to send this to the planning board to hold a hearing to take it. Um, prior to me being elected to this board, I had spent close to twenty years or so, fifteen plus years working to get all the previously unaccepted roads of subdivisions accepted. Um, this one got held up by another petition, but now that the winds have changed, I think it would behoove us to send this to the planning board to get this in front of town meeting and get this road accepted. Roads.
You're probably right, because I see twenty, it goes up to at least twenty one.
Yep, at least.
Just a guess.
Assuming that there's no, nobody else that didn't sign. But so I guess we would be
Sorry, you're making that motion, Doug?
You know what? I will. Hey, may I take that privilege? Thank you. I'll make the motion to send this to the planning board to hold a hearing to eventually put a war, a warrant or a one in front of the town meeting to accept these ways.
I'll second that. That was a great explanation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Doug. Uh, roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Well, I should ask, Randy, do you have any other interesting interesting you wanted to put in, but so let's see. Next, we need to approve the hiring request from the library trustees for Tanya Sullivan to fill the circulation librarian position, which is eighteen hours per week, starting July thirty first twenty twenty four due to Susan Wagner's retirement.
I have a request from Lynn Blair. She couldn't make it tonight.
Okay.
Um, this, um, gosh, I can't remember. The circulation position, we will become open on July thirty first. But Lynn asked that Tanya be able to come in a couple of weeks earlier to train. So instead of starting on the day the position opens, starting a couple of weeks prior so that she can train with, uh, Susan Wagner that's working the desk now.
We have the financial feasibility of doing that?
She does.
I would not be opposed to that after Boris' minute.
Yeah, I have no issues with it. So
You're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to fire Tanya Sullivan to fill the circulation librarian position, and I guess that would be to start ASAP for training.
Um, to, well, I don't think it
It doesn't have, it just
Doesn't have a date, yeah.
Yeah, so she's asking for about two weeks, two weeks before, so, about the fifteenth. You can say, okay, sure, as of July fifteenth.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Well, here's the money. It's in the next line.
Yep. There you go.
Approve the hiring request from the library trustees for Tanya Sullivan to fill the circulation librarian position, eighteen hours per week due to Susan Wagner's retirement. And approve to accept the donation to the library's, oh, wait a minute.
There's the next one, the thirty bucks.
Thirty bucks, okay, all right.
Gift account, that'll be for breakfast, not your start.
Okay, well, then we need to approve that donation from the gift account of thirty dollars.
Make a motion to accept that donation.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Oh, Dan Gill, aye, sir.
Doug Mogul, aye.
This one's kind of an important one. We need to ratify Lieutenant Michael Taggart's contract.
And you just walked back.
I think it's an L O A, right? Is that what it actually is?
It is, yes, a letter of understanding. Okay, I'll make a motion to ratify the letter of understanding for Lieutenant Michael Taggart.
I'll gladly second the motion.
Roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. You can stay. So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, as we get to the new business, I guess this is an opportune time to call it out, though. Um, or we could use
Go ahead.
Totally up to you. I will be clear then, we talked about this a little bit during the break, but by ratifying now Lieutenant Taggart's con, uh, L O A, you now have actually officially created the vacancy. One of the vacancies in which you're interviewing for tonight. So I just want to be clear as we go through the appointment process, hopefully tonight, that we we need to make, take two separate votes for those positions, because one of the sergeant positions is to fill a retirement. So the retired officer, uh, does not have the privilege of showing back up and said, I changed my mind and would like to come back. And then, you know, that that sergeant then bumps back to patrolman. So it is kind of a permanent appointment. The second appointment would be for the vacancy that we just created by, uh, ratifying uh, Lieutenant Taggart's contract. Uh, it has not happened in recent memory that I'm ever aware. But should this whole thing not work out with Lieutenant Taggart, he would have the option to return to his previous rank, which would then bump the sergeant that you appoint back to patrolman. So therefore, I would I don't know what you call it, but it would be the lesser appointment. So therefore, you need to have two separate votes to fill the vacancy created by the retirement of Sergeant Miles, and then another vote to make an appointment to sergeant uh, provision, I guess as a provisional sergeant for one year to fill the vacancy created by Lieutenant Taggart.
Thank you for that. Please.
I'm just the question.
So, new business. We have to talk about approving the request from the assessor's office to raise their abutters list request fee from five cents a page printed to ten dollars request completed.
Did you have any notes on that?
No.
Let's have the assessor come in and talk to us about that.
Right, because I had questions.
I watched the meeting, but they just really talked about why they wanted to raise it. I'd rather hear
Okay.
Get everybody's questions answered accordingly. So we need to approve the Maya Flex Grant Program application rewards for the hazardous trees at North Pond.
I'll make that motion to approve the Flex Grant Program application, um, to remove the hazardous trees at North Pond. Uh, during the Municipal Modernization Act fund transfers, end of year, the the money necessary to remove those trees was omitted. Um, there is a grant opportunity from Maya.
Um, there is a grant opportunity from Maya. Um, to apply, uh, it's kind of a hazardous mitigation grant. So, uh, requesting, I'd request to have, uh, Ms. Parker submit that grant application. Uh, on our behalf to get rid of those trees.
Excuse me, roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, I.
So we need to talk about approving the contract for the cost proposal, excuse me, for permit eyes twenty twenty E permitting. Software solution, standard configuration model for the building and Board of Health departments.
Now, Tom was going to try to make it, I didn't see him, Tom. Tom's not here, so he gave me a script. In case he couldn't make it. Um, attached is the proposed contract with Full Circle Technologies for their Permit Eyes twenty twenty software. Kyle and I are both in support of adopting the contract. The building department currently uses a previous version of Permit Eyes that is scheduled to go offline in the next year or so. Kyle has been satisfied with the current version, but also has experience with the new Permit Eyes twenty twenty, and there are significant improvements. Especially when it comes to being more user friendly. The health department currently issues paper permits that we track through Excel. Moving to an E permitting platform will significantly increase our efficiency in the office. And once all of our permities. And once all of our permities adjust to the change, I think that they will find it to be easier as well. We also solicited a quote from another platform called OpenGov. Kyle and I met with OpenGov on June twentieth and discussed our needs with them. We still have not received a written estimate from OpenGov. But the verbal price they gave us was twenty to thirty thousand dollars, which only covered the annual fee for both building and health. But did not include the sixteen thousand dollars to migrate over the existing building E permitting data. Or an unspecified amount for the build out of the system. Given our previous positive experience with Full Circle Technologies. And that the cost is significantly less, it is my opinion that Full Circle Technologies is the obvious choice.
Did you have corrections to numbers there?
Um, he gave me the new proposal, okay, yep. Sorry, I tried to pass it out first, I was.
This was discussed during the budget hearing process too, as Kyle discussed it, and then his migration and then Florida Health jumping on the same platform.
Yeah, the original one you have has wrong numbers, though.
This, it has been updated to an even lesser price.
They're lesser.
Lesser.
Better.
You're welcome. So. I had noted that it was an error and they actually reduced the price, I think, as a courtesy. For the mistake, so. So it's now thirty-five, eight, ten.
I'm gonna second to the last page.
Yep. I'm good.
So, I make the motion to approve that contract for Permit Eyes twenty twenty for thirty-five, eight, ten.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, I.
I have no new business, so, Ms. Gill.
No new business.
Mr. Mogul.
Oh, took care of it already.
Alright. Aiden. Alrighty, old business. So Mass DPU Public Hearing for South Lake Municipal Electric Aggregation Program, August fifth, there'll be a hearing, um. You can attend it online. It is at ten AM, it's gonna be virtual and there'll be three public taking place that morning, or it's gonna be about ten to fifteen. Maybe twenty minutes for each municipality, and, uh, we do not have to be there, but I will be on that. And, um, once that goes through, that's when the DPU will determine whether the. Our program meets the standards that they are requiring. Uh, it is available for public viewing at Town Hall, it's posted on the, um. Commitment Information Board, and you can also get it off the website, so. I don't, we're at that point now, but I'm not gonna curse it, so. Be nice to be done with it, we'll see. And that's that for that. Appointments process, town clerk gave a list for needed appointments, Ms. Gill. Any updates?
Um, I think we can start the. Public safety ones as soon as possible and get those out of the way, and then we've got a couple of new applicants for certain boards. We can, when Lisa gets back, I guess she can schedule those if you like. For the next available meetings, and we can knock those boards out that have new applicants at least.
Yeah. Sounds works.
Plan.
Sounds like a plan.
I'd also like to see those who have terms expiring that wanna continue, at least signify that they wish to continue.
And I've been keeping track of that, and I don't believe there's anybody missing at the moment.
And that. And then if anyone else applied for those, um. For those boards, right, there's no.
Yep.
Expectation of reappointment.
That's where some of them are.
Yep. So I want to view that.
Alright, LPP discussion, um, Norm, I see you there. Well, I've got you there, any updates from you guys on your end?
No.
No, okay, so I've been going back and forth with Colin Mall, um. His big concern, he, I've brought, I've brought forward your, the auditing process, and. He's concerned about having some sort of outside audit. He understands that it's a Southfield member. On the, that would be on the lake, but that's one of the things that, for some reason, his board is kind of hung up on, is. To do an outside audit, I'm gonna go back and forth with him and see if he's got anybody. In mind and what this is gonna cost and.
An audit of what?
The.
Norm's numbers?
Norm's numbers.
Counting go boats and docks. LMC does that annual.
And go get their own guy and we'll compare notes.
That, that's, I've, that point has been brought to their attention, that's one of the things that their board is hung up on.
That they don't believe Norm's accounting of the boats and docks? Alright, send us their list, we'll compare notes. I like Norm's, I'd take Norm's numbers any day, by the.
I, I, yeah, I don't believe it's a Mr. Mall's issue, I believe it's coming from.
I get it, I'm just saying that if, if you disagree with.
I'm just passing along the, I'm going back and forth.
I'm not just being the messenger here, but if, uh, if anyone's watching, if you disagree with our numbers. Bring us your numbers and we'll. We can see where there's a difference.
Ultimately, if we go with the plan that is in place, it's. Well, I kind of could say it doesn't matter, but, you know, we're still, things are.
Yeah, I agree. The alternative is that everyone in Southfield has to go and get a chapter ninety-one license, which is not appealing to anybody.
No. But, uh, I, yeah, that was the only sticking point that I've been going back and forth with him on, so.
That's the, uh, other LPP topic, however, but thank you for the update.
Yes.
Yeah, I always thought it was this thing.
Um, it is this thing, um, I did get two names from Sabrina today to who this letter could be addressed to. Um, so I'll get that drafted and we'll all sign it and send it off to DEP for them to review. The amended LPT like permitting program exceptions. That were.
Can I make one suggestion?
Sure can.
Uh, I'd like to see this split into. I, I wholeheartedly agree a hundred percent about the hardship piece of this. That better defines and allows handicap except, uh, exceptions, especially given all that's gone on. Uh, the other thing is much more substantive and may take a deeper reply from, from, uh, DEP. To understand that distinction, and they're really not the same issue at all.
They are not the same issue.
So I would kind of treat this as two separate issues, and whether, under the LPP, you could permit a dock and then rent space on said dock. Now that we've actually read it and it doesn't appear that anything says no. Um. And we, if we want to move to change it to prohibit that, or if DEP's own rules prohibit that, that's great. But I think it's two separate things, be two letters to DEP in my opinion.
See the, where the insertion was on the document?
Yeah, I did.
It's, it's just a parenthetical statement.
I get it.
On theirs, on their insertion.
I just would be just, if you're gonna ask DEP something, they're gonna look at the first thing. Or they're gonna stumble over the second thing, this is my opinion.
Want to hold up the other two?
Yeah, and then, you know, especially because that's a, a bigger, I think the second one's a bigger question than the first, I think the first one's common sense.
So I guess I would be looking for. Probably make a motion to. Move forward the request for modification, but separate it, um, just do it for the handicap hardship portion at this point. And then, uh, we can work on the other aspect of it as a separate entity.
Do we have to review that with Conservation Commission?
They gave it right back to us to, to take, I would have thought that they could have. Gone over the goal line because the LPP was really theirs, I understand the letter usually comes via the, the select board, but, uh. Six to one, I don't think you have to go back to them, I think we're just splitting the question, you're making, you're asking two questions.
We'll ask them to submit a separate letter then through us to address the other issue.
Okay, make a motion for that.
Did you just make that motion?
I'm making that.
Okay. I think I'll second that and then we'll do that.
Okay.
We'll just separate it, with two, two different questions sent to the E P.
Probably should call for a vote, Mr. Trump.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, I.
Alright.
So we'll ask Conservation to prepare a separate cover letter for the other issue.
Yeah.
Sergeant interviews. Guess we're at that point.
Fun fact, so we, we talked about the process, right, a little bit about what, what I think we need to do, and it's two separate votes. Were we all in agreement on that part?
Yes.
That's it. Uh, fun fact, I guess I've been doing this a while. First guy I put on. And, uh, right behind each other, and I was at, uh, you put yourself through the academy, I know I was at your academy graduation. Interesting, I mean, I can't believe we're at that point, I mean, you became, you were a reserve, you were a reserve. I remember you both sitting here, I was waiting for your parents to come pick you up, I couldn't believe that you were old enough to carry a gun at the time. And what was that, eight years ago?
Six.
Six, well, you've been full-time six, you were reserved for.
Seven years.
Seven or eight years, yeah, wow, and. It was probably two thousand fifteen, sixteen, right, because. When you came on full-time from reserve.
Full-time in two thousand sixteen as a reserve in two thousand twelve.
Wow. So I, you were a reserve when I, when I came on this board, but I remember you were the first officer appointment that I made, um. I'm a huge believer in a strong bench, and, you know, the depletion of the reserves really is a handicap to. Police departments in the Commonwealth and especially small towns like ours. You know, the reserves are a huge piece of what we do, um, for staff development and kind of understanding some of the officers that. You know, we, we might have a diamond in the rough or someone who's, you know, a future chief in the department. Um, and. With your permission.
Go right ahead.
So, um. I, I, I think, a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was two, three weeks ago, we made some really, really tough decisions. Very, very difficult decisions to me, um. The first one is an, an absolute no-brainer. Um, and if. Do you guys have further discussion or you would like a motion from the lowly clerk?
I do, I think you're doing fine.
Yeah, I've got nothing to add.
So as I mentioned that. We need to create, we need to make two appointments. And one of them is to fill the vacancy created by the retirement of, uh. Sergeant Miles. Who we greatly missed, by the way, is a good guy. Um, but that, so I think that that's the. Well, I don't know what you want to call it, but that's the more permanent of the two sergeant positions, because there's always the remote possibility. Um, and I know he's sitting there, wincing right now, that if the lieutenant thing doesn't work out, the other one could, could go back, but this one is, uh, kind of irrevocable. Um, so it would be my honor and I, I'm really proud to make this motion, to be honest with you, to, um. To nominate, um, Michael Bridges for that sergeant position.
I'm happy to second that.
I'll third it. Roll call vote. Prove Mike Bridges as. Sergeant.
Hold on, we didn't vote yet. Is Mrs. Bridges on? I just want to make sure she's still with us, I saw Michael Bridges. That's, that's Mrs. Bridges, or is that you in another room?
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, I. Congratulations.
You're doing so well, would you like to do the next one?
Ouch, yes. I would, the second one. Um, I'm also really, I, I'm really proud of, of where we are with this. And I think we have two really strong candidates, and by the way, I have full faith that this whole thing with Taggart's gonna work out, so. Um, it's purely, so, pretty sure, um.
I have no stake in that game.
But, uh, I think that, you know, it is a formality that we needed to, to go through it, but, um, you know, so I think. The interviews to me were very telling. Um, I know these gentlemen, and. I, I think we're gonna have a little bit more discussion here, I think. Um. Or not, I can't read minds, so I, I'd like to make the nomination to appoint Sergeant, uh, sorry, Officer Parker as our next sergeant.
And I will happily second that.
This interview was the toughest for me. You had two great candidates, and. I've known Kyle's dad for a long time, I've known Garrett for quite some time, you know, we, everybody knows what I do for my career, and. This, this is a difficult, very, very difficult one, to the, to the point where. Very difficult for me. Um. But, in the spirit of continuity, I am going to, uh, also vote with Mr. Parker. So I would need a motion to approve, uh, making Officer Garrett Parker Sergeant contingent on Lieutenant Taggart not coming back and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You have that first made and seconded, it's a roll call vote, I think.
Yes, so Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, I.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, Lisa. I'm scared, I'm not that.
And, um, uh, two things, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we move on. One is, uh, point of order is to turn in all your stuff, including your interview notes and everything else, and Aiden, which I've done. There was one letter that was included with the applications from.
Yeah.
An officer who chose not to seek the appointment at this time.
And I just, actually coming from my position, I want to say I, how much that, that is.
As do I, without naming the officer here, obviously, that's, that's not the point, I, I think it. It meant a lot to me for, for him to put that forth and to let us know where they stand and what their future may portend, so. Um, I just wanted to have that noted for the record.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we are going to be moving on.
The room way down.
To the COA Director position, Nadine.
Um, we are. Going to schedule those interviews on the fifteenth.
So we have more than one?
Yes, we do. We should need, um.
Got a few more.
We went back through the applications, uh, with, uh, the Council Nating Director and chose another, um. We went back through the applications uh, with uh, the Council of Needing Director and chose another, um, he chose an applicant um, as well, so we have four. Not everyone is responding to my calls, but I think with that extra bit of time that I'll get them all.
Okay.
How about that? I'm gonna be optimistic. So those interviews are gonna be on July fifteenth.
Very good. Mr. Mogul, H S I C I M A. We'll still guess, electric ISP.
We are gonna try to pull together a meeting next week after the fourth. Um, and I did receive a note from Mr. Sullivan that they're going to start weekly weekly meetings with themselves and a representative. So I've gotta find out exactly who that is uh, from Westville Gas and who from us is going to attend. Nadine, did I turn in my agenda with my submission? Maybe, anyway, here and there.
Right.
Sure did. So that's all the update I have for you on that. Everything else is, it's kind of a, not much going on. The board does, we do need to get back together because there was a little subcommittee that was appointed to review some financial um, projections and we need to get together and get that data back in front of the public.
Very good.
Marijuana dispensary update, we've talked about that.
I just wanna offer you one thing I have on that.
Yep.
I just kinda did a re, for myself, I did a recap of their three-year projections, whatever they gave us, including fully up four twenty. If you would like that for any reason, I'll pop this for you.
Absolutely.
Kinda compare them and.
Okay, so.
That was confidential information, not to be cherished.
Very good. So the Mass General Law sixty-one A, we have the joint meeting set for July eleventh at six PM in the land use hearing room. The T-Mobile Hometown Grant, myself and Mr. Shield finally made contact and I'm working with a Robert.
It's spelled wrong. I was just correcting for you.
Okay. I was, I wonder if I said it wrong.
No, you're good.
Um, and the, we're trying to coordinate a meetup at Wally Park with myself and some reps from the Park and Rec and go out there to assess what is going to be needed out there as far as equipment and what the cost estimate is going to be to set that wifi system up at the park. Soon as we have a date, I will make sure everyone is aware of it and let everybody know when we are going out there. So that's where we are on that. Select master plan implementation subcommittee members, Mr. Mogul and Mr. Doherty.
No update.
No update.
Will, will there be one soon?
Yes, I promise.
DPW planned to incorporate Buildings and Grounds Department under DPW. So we've had, asked Ms. Parker to go into charge of researching that and the options around it. And we'll await her information and her review. Um, well, I have.
Right answer with a new C O coming in to have her have a look at that.
And as far as old business, myself, I have nothing to go over.
Ditto.
Real. All right, I gotta go.
Okay.
So first of all, uh, we did cover the trees at North Pond, proving that there's more than one way to skin the cat. Hopefully that grant will be successful. I wanna thank everybody um, from our safety agencies to Park and Rec, to those who volunteered to park cars, to Rick Johnson, our dispatch partners, incident command, everybody else that made um, a wildly successful motocross national event this past weekend. If you were in town anywhere but on Powder Mill Road, you probably didn't even notice anything was going on.
Nope.
Um, but I, they'll never tell you the actual number, but it was well north of ten thousand people came into the town of Southwick. Um, it was a ginormous fundraiser for the rec center. It was a ginormous fundraiser for Park and Rec. Um, it had to be an overall economic benefit for the town just by the sheer number of people that were here. Um, it was on national television on Peacock. Um, and we're lucky to have such a facility here in our town. So kudos to everyone who helped in any way, shape or form to pull that off. I mean, even the, you know, I think the Police Association was, was doing hamburgers and hot dogs down there and they made a pile of dough for their association. So, you know, rising tide lifts all boats for that.
I didn't hear any complaints about traffic.
The only people were complaining were the only people leaving and it got bad for half hour and, and it wasn't in the, it was the pressure out of town. No, you couldn't get out of town fast enough. And, you know, unfortunately, that's the nature of the game. I wish we had more things here for people to partake in. We, you know, I'm sure the restaurants were all full and busy and every, and everybody else. But it was like Feeding Hills Road was, the traffic was backed up to Feeding Hills, but anytime you unleash ten thousand people out of a town of a population of ten thousand, you're gonna have traffic. But no complaints. It was really, really well done. Um, you know, and of course, when it rains, it pours. The fire department and the police department were crazy in the morning and in the afternoon outside of the track. But thanks to everybody. Uh, next, did anybody take a look at the roads numbers? To put together a list of how to spend two point four-ish million dollars?
For Randy to come back with uh, his re recommendations, correct?
We had them. So, but anyway, I, I, I uh, I'll send it to on, back to the board for discussion next week in public or when our next meeting is, but I managed to spend all but forty thousand dollars of it. Um, by taking the projects and the dollar amount and then either committing the money all this year or some this year, some next year to come up with the two point four million dollars. Uh, by way of example, like Ed Holcomb Road, it's one point six million. That's a three-year project. So you commit the money over three years and you can get it done. And then you could still have some money to do some of the other roads. Um, and lastly, Mr. Chair, I ask that under whole business, we add um, a, a discussion or, or an item that we need to schedule, we need to bond, create a, a, a larger bonding issue somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty million dollars, whether it's nineteen, eighteen or twenty-one million dollars dedicated to roads. Um, in order to get us out of this, I mean, we, you can spend two point four one, seven million dollars in twelve minutes. I did it. Um, and it didn't even really take twelve minutes. The amount of work that needs to be done far exceeds our ability at this time. So we need to bring forth that warrant. If a, as a board, either vote up or down to put forth a, I think it's a, a warrant article and it has to go to the ballot box. So.
William or Oprah, as you said?
I, I don't think it's more than that, but you know, you, you saw the list from, that was a partial list from Randy and that was fifteen million, seven hundred eighty thousand. And that didn't include all the work that needs to be done. So it's, it's not gonna get any cheaper in years out and, and you need to treat these, if we were gonna go build a new building, I don't wanna, you know, throw DPW to our, you know, at some point, we're gonna be looking at a new DPW facility. We'd bond it, we'd pay for it over the, you know, twenty to thirty years. You know, I don't know if this is a ten-year bond, a twenty-year bond. We'll have to have some discussions with the financial folks about that, but the, a, a road is just kind of a horizontal asset, every one of them. And we need to treat them as that. I've been trying to do that for a few years now as far as we've done it, we bonded, we, we didn't use to bond for roads. We did everything by cash. And a few years ago, we said, look, we really do need to bond because we don't have even the cash to, to, to do the amount of roadwork that needs to be done. Well, even that, you know, borrowing a million or two millions, not getting it done, we're not keeping pace with the condition of the roads. Other towns have done it. I will also tell you, it puts you on a schedule, because if you go and wipe out a lot of your roads in a, in a four-year period, you're not gonna do it all in one year. Four or five-year period with a twenty-year bond note, well, guess what? In fifteen years, you're doing it again. And I don't anticipate, I will be here on this board doing that at that time, but that's the precedent you're setting.
Very good.
That's it for me, sir.
All right. Nadine, anything? Do we have a ticket? I guess then we would be looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, it's only a quarter of second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, I.